Okay, I'm calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is February 20th, 2023. It is 6:21 PM. We're a little late starting. HR went a little bit longer than we expected, which is great. Great conversations. But Ms. Lamphier, can you do the roll call?
Oh, sure.
You need your mic on that.
Christina Darling?
Here.
Heather Raymond?
I'm here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
I am here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And Ms. Gilio's not here.
Yep, she is. Oh, it's sick tonight.
Okay.
We also have Mr. Pasca, Dr. Andre, Mr. Donovan, and Dr. Sarfey.
Okay.
And our student members. Ms. Lamphier, can you do the prayer? The prayer. Do the prayer. Can you do the prayer? And then I will have... Ms. Odin, will you lead us in the pledge? Okay.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Our presentation for tonight is on the science of reading. And I see Ms. Sarfey is in the hot seat, so I can only assume that she's running this show. So I will hand the floor over to you.
Thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to start off by saying that we had an amazing professional development workshop day today. Meredith and David Lieben, who are the authors of this book, No Better Do Better, came to Nashua. They presented at two separate sessions. The first session was kind of an overview of the research, and the second session was a more interactive opportunity for teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, and of course, the experts. What was amazing about today's professional development is that, again, we had all levels participate. Every single one of our elementary administrators attended the morning workshop because they wanted to make sure they had the same information about best practices when it comes to literacy instruction as our teachers. Additionally, we had a number of paraprofessionals join the workshops as well because we heard feedback from our paraprofessionals. They talked about how they wanted to be able to have the same training as the teachers they work with, so that when they are assisting students who have the highest needs, they also have access to high-quality training. So I just wanted to name that. Another thing that I just wanted to talk about really quickly with regard to the PD Day is that I've already been collecting some responses with regard to feedback. So far, I think I have about 210 responses. And I just want to name that out of the 210 responses that I have so far, 69% of our teachers elected to attend two sessions today. Teachers could have developed their own professional learning plan. They could get caught up on things as long as their plan was approved by their administrator. But our teachers chose to leave their buildings, come here, and engage in a full day of learning. So I wanted to name that. I wanted to thank our teachers. Thank all of our principals for attending. Thank Dr. Andre because he also came to both sessions. So with that leads into this BOE presentation tonight. So our goal is to ensure that we have proficient students across our district when it comes to reading instruction. We know that reading opens the door to all content areas, and this is something that we are very passionate about. I am very pleased to have this amazing team of educators who have been working with me very closely. Our ELA coach, Erin Putnam. Principal Saroni, she couldn't be here tonight. Amy Schuler, Deb Hovey from the middle school, Danielle Booton, Nadine DeRozier, Sherry Groton, Amy Craig, Sandy La Rochelle, and Amy Blackwell. One thing I just want to note about this list right here is that we have district-level employees. We have coaches. We have principals. We have middle school teachers. We have reading specialists, and we have special educators. So I just want to talk about how many people in our district are committed to this charge to improving reading proficiency across our district. All right, so first and foremost, teachers have always done the best that they could with what they had. One thing that I keep hearing from teachers is the more I hear about the research, the worse I feel about my instruction, or I feel like I could have done something differently. And I just want to stop right there because teachers are coming to work every single day, absolutely killing themselves, and doing what they know is best for students. At the same time, our district's responsibility is to make sure that we put the highest quality and most aligned resources in teachers' hands. Tonight, we're going to talk about some of the highlights that we've seen across our district. There are amazing things happening, best practices that are being employed, and we want to be able to name what those best practices are. We also want to make sure that we clear up some misconceptions. And we want to talk a little bit about the key role that mindset plays when it comes to literacy instruction. We're also going to talk a little bit about state expectations because the state has outlined what it should look like in 2027 for our district when it comes to reading proficiency and also proficiency across the content areas. We're going to talk about what is the simple view of reading, and then we're also going to talk about what is this thing called the science of reading. We're going to talk a little bit about what's next for our district. We have been convening our ELA steering committee. We've done a lot of work. There's a lot of work to be done over the summer and into next year. And we're going to talk a lot about how we can incorporate the structured literacy approach into our instruction. Right now, our district is caught between a balanced literacy approach and a structured literacy approach. And we're going to talk a little bit about kind of what that means and what we have to do for next steps. And we're also going to talk about our continued efforts to make sure that we are offering professional development that supports the research. One of the things I just want to talk about really quickly is the value of our in-house professional development. We have our ELA coach. We have reading specialists. We have our ELL teacher, Sarah McKinnon-Hunt, who's hiding in the back right there. We have all of these people who have been trained, who have trained themselves, who have gone to all the trainings, and then are willing to go ahead and turnkey all of the information to be able to provide many opportunities to our teachers to engage in professional development. So I just want to name that. I want to thank our teachers who go above and beyond every single day.
All right, I'm going to start off by talking about the simple view of reading. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the green light's on. Can you hear me now? Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Erin Putnam, and I am the elementary ELA coach. So we're starting off with a graphic that is being passed around that's called the simple view of reading. You can also see it on the slide up on the screen. The simple view of reading is a formula that defines the skills that contribute to reading comprehension, which we know is the goal of reading. On that graphic that is being passed around, you see the simple view of reading is like a multiplication problem. If one of the two sides, decoding or language comprehension, is zero, that means we don't have reading comprehension. So we call that the simple view of reading because it's really simple to see those two parts that we need to have in reading comprehension. You can see that on the slide up on the screen as well, language comprehension and decoding. But we know that reading comprehension is much more complex than just thinking about language comprehension and decoding. That second graphic that's up there breaks down those pieces much deeper. Go to the next slide. And so in talking about that, I wanted to first talk about Scarborough's Reading Rope. Scarborough's Reading Rope was created by Hollis Scarborough in 2001. And basically, what she did was she took that simple view of reading and turned it on its side and broke down those strands to talk about all of the individual pieces that we need to do for language comprehension and decoding to help create a skilled reader that has solid reading comprehension. So in looking at this graphic, if you look down to the blue strands, word recognition, we have made some amazing shifts in our district to highlight a lot of those strands. For example, we're currently using Foundations in K-3, which is an explicit and systematic phonics curriculum. We are also using Hagerty in grades K-2, which is instruction for phonological and phonemic awareness. We have provided K-2 teachers with decodable text to give students that practice tool to be able to utilize what they're learning in phonics and phonemic awareness. And many of our schools have a curriculum, or I'm sorry, not a curriculum, a resource called Lexia, which is an online program, and that addresses all the components of reading and provides teachers with great data on how their students are performing.
Hi, Nadine DeRozier, reading specialist over at Birch Hill. I was just going to touch upon, up there you'll see that we've done some action research around these areas. In the 4th and 5th grade classroom right now at Birch Hill, we are working with a program called Spelography that teaches spelling concepts explicitly, systematically, and cumulatively. Students make sense of the English spelling system, them becoming better with understanding reading and writing words. This came about seeing basically a lot of the COVID slip and a lot of the kids missing the majority of that word recognition piece that we needed. So we stepped in and found something that is working well so far. It's pretty new, hot off the press. One of the co-authors of the program is Louisa Moats, who we'll touch upon on letters, and I'll discuss that a little bit deeper. She's amazing. She's one of the big gurus behind the science of reading. One of the highlights from a 4th grade teacher quote that she said, which resonated with me, that said, "Spelography is the best thing that's happened to 4th grade." So just to hear that teachers are starting to embrace this mind shift and encompassing it and seeing where their students are and where they need to go has been wonderful. Oh, yes, and a kindergarten teacher also had stopped me the other day and said, "Nadine, I can't believe it. I can't believe it. My EL students are reading. They're using the Hagerty. They're hearing sounds. They're putting things together. I've never seen them this far ahead in the game." So just hearing all these pieces coming back and teachers excited with what they're seeing and the transformations in front of them is very warm, and it's a wonderful thing to see. Letters Training, LETRS, which stands for Language Essentials for Teaching of Reading and Spelling, is a two-year commitment that is being put on by the Department of Education through New Hampshire, which is a wonderful program. Many of our teachers within the district are giving two years to educate themselves. It will go through the entire process of the science of reading. It starts with the word recognition for the first year and really digs in deeply with it, and then it will move on to the second year encompassing more of the language comprehension. So not only is it available to teachers, it's also available at an administrative level as well. And I know some of the administrators within the area are taking part in it so that they can understand when they walk into a classroom, what does the science of reading look like? How do I know that it's being employed within our classrooms? So those are just some of the highlights that we're working on right now. Which brings us into kind of our mind shift of where we want to go. The first one, we can't...
I just need to interrupt you. I just need you to get closer to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like obnoxiously close to it so that we can pick it.
Like, I feel like I'm...
It feels...
Okay, okay. Sorry.
The more awkward it feels, the better positioned you are.
Thank you. Okay. So that brings us on to our next slide, which, and the first bullet, we can see that we can't intervene our way out of a Tier 1 problem, as Dr. Sarfey was saying. That is really where we're targeting our instruction right now, is our Tier 1. How can we make these improvements? Our mindset, having the teachers beginning to shift their mindset of science of reading. We're looking at how we're using Hagerty, how we're using the Foundations right now to help turn our Tier 1 around. It's saying that almost every child can learn to read, which we know. We know that 60 to 65% of students, structured literacy approach is essential. So if you think of that number, 65% of our population need that. 30% will learn to read relatively with ease, however, are advantaged by a structured literacy approach. So that's about 95% of our population right there hitting by utilizing approaches that support science of reading. And that was... What was it? And even older students can learn to read. So just because they might be in high school, every student can learn to read.
So something that Nadine shared, that 95% of students have the ability to read given the right instruction. Some are going to need more explicit instruction, but 95% of students can learn to read. And so this quote that we have up here on the screen is actually from David Lieben, who was one of the presenters today and the co-author of No Better Do Better. And so in this quote, it says, "If your student is in 9th grade reading on a 5th grade, or in 9th grade, reading on a 5th grade reading level, and you only give them 5th grade work, you've only created a better 5th grader." So that kind of brings us into our next steps in thinking about using complex text and really those other strands of the reading rope and how we can continue this work.
I'm Amy Blackwell, the Assistant Principal at Amherst Street Elementary School. So as far as our state expectations go, by 2027, it is expected that 71% of our students will be proficient in reading, 54% with math proficiency, 65% ELL proficiency, and 94% graduation rate. Currently, 20% of our elementary students meet state expectations in reading. Approximately 50% of our students are approaching reading proficiency. We have begun to address this through the implementation of a structured systematic phonics program complemented by an emphasis on phonemic awareness. We are encouraged about the number of students that are approaching proficiency, but we know there's more work to be done.
Point of clarification, 20% overall district-wide are proficient readers.
Right. Thank you. That is Dr. Louisa Moats, the co-author, as mentioned earlier, of Spelography and Letters. I'll read to you the quote next to her name. "The body of work referred to as the science of reading is not an ideology, not a philosophy, not a political agenda, not a one-size-fits-all approach, not a program of instruction, nor a specific component of instruction. It is the emerging consensus from many related disciplines, based on literally thousands of studies, supported by hundreds of millions of research dollars conducted across the world in many languages. These studies have revealed a great deal about how we learn to read, what goes wrong when students don't learn, and what kind of instruction is most likely to work the best for most students." For decades, schools have taught children the strategies of struggling readers, using a theory about reading that cognitive scientists have repeatedly debunked after, I'm sorry, and many teachers and parents, unfortunately, don't even know that there's a problem with this approach. We've been taking, our nation has been taking a skills-based approach for decades, and I just want to emphasize the fact that the skills-based approach is grounded in disproven research. This research has been disproven time and time again by cognitive scientists. So what's next? Well, we're going to continue to dig into our data. We need to make sure that we're looking not only at classroom-level data, also our ELL data and our data when it comes to our students who are identified. We need to continue to share the research. I'm excited to say that we have a coalition of teachers who are banging down our doors and who are saying, "What are we doing next? Where are we going?" Because they recognize that they have all of these resources in front of them, but they also recognize that they have to teach every single content area. So imagine being a teacher who has to teach literacy, science, math, social studies, and then you have all of these literacy resources in front of you, and you're trying to figure out how the heck you're going to make sense of them because now the research says that your resources aren't the best resources. So you have to spend time trying to figure out, okay, how am I going to use them so I can make sure that what I employ is aligned to the research? So with that comes an examination of our current resources. We also have to examine what our expectations are for teachers and students. I don't think it's reasonable to expect teachers to try to make sense of all of these materials in front of them. I'd like to provide the best, most aligned resources to teachers and put them in teachers' hands so that they can focus on teaching. Additionally, I think it's important, too, that we have already outlined what our instructional priorities are for our district, and we need to make sure that our work is grounded in those instructional priorities. The instructional priorities don't come from a philosophy or a theory. They come right from the Common Core state standards. And we need to do that in collaboration with our ESL teachers and our special educators. We need to make sure that we are taking a system-wide approach rather than kind of operating in silos, which is, I think, something that's been happening for too long. We also need to make sure that we are conducting some action research. We have great action research going on right now. I know that Nadine just talked about things happening at Birch Hill over at Bicentennial. There's a lot of action research going on, and teachers are so excited. We're not asking teachers to try anything and everything. They're coming to us and saying, "Listen, I've done so much research, and I feel like this is like one little shift that I want to make in my instruction. Can you help support me in this?" And certainly, we want to be able to support teachers in stretching themselves, but also trying things with students to improve academic achievement. One of the things that we're committed to as an ELA steering team is sharing our findings of our action research, research rather, with all of you, with the Board of Education. And we would like to make a recommendation to the Board of Education so that we can purchase core resources, again, that are aligned to the research. Next step from that would be for us to develop an implementation plan to ensure that all students are provided with access and entry, but also so that we can make sure that we have high-quality professional development for our teachers, so that professional development is consistent and it's sustainable so that we can affect long-term change. And that, I think, concludes our presentation.
Thank you. That sounds very interesting. I love the threads of reading. It really highlights how, not how easy it is, but how easy it could be to just kind of tease out what the necessary pieces are of reading. Do we have any comments or questions from the board? Ms... Oh, God, Ms. Darling.
It is Darling. Sometimes I'm Megan, sometimes I'm Amy. Never know.
I was going for Ms. Megan. I was like, that's the joke. That's not her real name.
So I'm over here, and I'm doing some wicked quick Googling, so excuse my numbers here. But I was intrigued by the 2027 goals, especially when I saw the 94 graduation rate, because I know our state is in like the 88% for average, and Nashua is at like 83%, and that's just a really high jump. Like currently, we're, the average public school in New Hampshire is achieving an average math proficiency of 38%, and we're looking at trying to get them up to 54. It's just, are these goals reasonable? Do you feel that this is something that is possible?
100%. I think we have the best teachers in the entire state, 100%. Again, our teachers gave up their time today that they could be spending in their classrooms to engage in professional development. I don't think that, I don't think that these goals are unattainable at all.
Awesome, and we do have amazing teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I'm really excited about this. I love evidence-based practices. If we can look and see what is working and then use that, that makes me very happy. My question is regarding some of the materials that we're using now. Like, I know that there are classrooms that we're using, Lucy Culkins. Are we still going to be pursuing some of that stuff that is less rigorously backed by science?
That is not our goal.
Okay.
Not our goal.
Good. Thanks. I have, I just have a follow-up question. So what it sounds like is introductory, how to introduce reading so that the foundation is there. How does this address the readers who are behind? I know the, all of this here, but is it...
So a couple of things.
Yeah, you know what my question is.
Yes, I know what you're saying. So we have students, again, the encouraging news, I know it doesn't sound encouraging, but it is encouraging because right now, district-wide, 3 to 11, about 20% of our students are meeting state expectations in our demonstrating reading proficiency. That is not the good news, of course. But the good news is that approximately 55 or 50, between 50 and 55% of our students are approaching proficiency. I truly believe that with tweaks in our instruction and more targeted Tier 2 intervention, and then also improvement of Tier 1 instruction so that we don't have to move to that intervention piece, I truly believe that we can help most of those students who are in that, you know, 50, 55% approaching category move over to the proficiency category. One of the things that we have to do, which is what we've been doing, is we have to teach, we have to teach phonics. We have to expose kids when it comes to elements of phonemic awareness and phonological awareness. We have to do that, and I think that, not I think, I know that teachers in grades 3 and up who have students who have been exposed to that systematic approach to phonics instruction, I know that those teachers are seeing better results in their students. The problem, I think, that you're talking about is all of the students in the upper grades who didn't, who were not afforded that opportunity. And that is something that, as a district, we absolutely need to address. That's one of the topics that David and Meredith Lieben talked about today. They let us know that even students who are older can still become proficient readers. But there are certain things that we have to focus on. We can't just focus on reading comprehension strategies. We have to focus on, we have to focus on building their foundational literacy skills. We have to help them with fluency and what that truly means. We have to help them develop automaticity and prosody and many different skills that they need in order to become proficient readers. But I think with that comes more professional development, I think, at the secondary level because I can tell you, as a former middle school ELA teacher, I was never taught how the brain learns to read. I never knew what to do with students who were not proficient readers when they came to me in middle school. At the time, and this is the no better do better piece, right? At the time, I thought, well, you know, Jen can't read, and this is pretty much her path, so I'm going to have to teach her how to, you know, make do with what she has and be able to get through. We know better now. We know that there are things that we can do to intervene. And so another professional development opportunity that we offered today was PD on dyslexias to help us to be able to identify students who are exhibiting signs of dyslexia, and then real practical strategies in order to be able to address students' needs. We have to continue to educate our teachers, but our teachers are here for it. Like Nadine said, the letters training, this is a two-year commitment. When I signed up for the letters training, I had to walk away from my computer and come back and sign my name because I was, my heart was just beating out of my chest because I could see what a commitment this was going to be on top of my job and everything else. But we have teachers all across the district who just, they signed up and they said, "Here, I'm here for it." I think it, I think it can be done, but we also, we also do have a lot of work in front of us. When it comes to exposing our students to complex texts, that's where we really falter. Our students have not been, they have not been exposed to complex texts, and they have not learned how to navigate complex texts as consistently as they should have. And that's no fault of the teachers. They just don't have the right resources in front of them.
Fantastic. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. It was a great presentation. You know, when I listened about the phonics, when I was on this board, 2000, 2001, and when I moved to the Board of Alderman, they started bringing phonics back in in 2002. when I moved to the Board of Alderman, they started bringing phonics back in in 2002. And it was a great thing because I know, and I never talk about my children, but my children went through the district, and they had whole language. And I remember when Elaine Holt was here, and Ms. Oden can attest to this, I asked her one day, she told me her husband couldn't read, and I said to her, well, what are you going to teach him? And everybody sat around that table with silence because they knew what Mrs. Johnson was going to say at the end. And she said, whole language, of course. And I said, why would I think different? You know? Why wouldn't you teach somebody phonics from the beginning? Because we all know by third grade, if you don't have that foundation there, these kids are going to crumble. And so many kids through my kids' generation crumbled. It was, this is the best we can get from them. We can't do any better because we taught them whole language. And we know when people come from a different country, the first thing that has to be is phonics, to learn the language, to get an idea. And we shortchanged so many of our students with this whole language, and I'm so glad that we're building this foundation now for our students to become proficient readers and to be able to read and not be illiterate as they get older. So thank you for this. Thank you.
Ms. Oden?
Thank you. Thanks to Dr. Soffte. I had asked her if I could attend the session on dyslexia. I met Nadine there and Sarah and a few others. It was obvious to me from listening to their conversations and the questions they were asking of the presenters that they are dedicated to this. They knew a whole lot more. It was just so, I guess I felt relief. I taught first grade for many years. As I said to them, I started teaching before any of them in the room were born. But I've always been a strong proponent of a solid phonics-based reading approach. You have to use all kinds of things, but that is a big approach. And I want to, I want to thank the district for providing absolutely excellent PD. The man that presented to us today was from the Landmark School, which is a school for dyslexic learners based in Massachusetts, very, very well-known, very well-respected. So thank you to the district, to administration, and to all these dedicated teachers for what they're doing for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Lamphier?
I was just wondering if any of the, you know, the Hagerty or the Foundations or the Lexia can be used currently as resources for middle school kids, or if we're going to need to go into different programs, or if there's any of those programs available.
So we can use some components of those programs. Those programs are really geared towards early elementary students, but we can certainly use some components of those programs. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we talked to the board about Wilson Level 1 training to offer some intervention for students who are struggling readers at the elementary level but also at the secondary level. So that's another resource. We also have a lot of teachers who are OG certified, and so, you know, those teachers are offering intervention to our secondary students as well. But I would say some components, but we wouldn't purchase Foundations and Hagerty exclusively for the middle school teachers. But I do think it's important for us to continue, and thank you, Deb, for being here, to continue to have those open lines of communication and collaboration between the elementary and the middle school level, because that's how we can sort of, you know, stop some of the things that Ms. Johnson was just talking about.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions. Thank you so much for coming and sharing with us. That sounded like a very interesting PD day. I'm glad Ms. Oden got to go. I know that probably sparked that, the teacher in her. I hope we don't lose her back to the classroom. But thank you very much for coming, and Ms. Soffte, thank you, Dr. Soffte, thank you for putting this together for us. Now, back to the boring business on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That's Ms. Darling, Ms. Brown, Ms. Johnson with the nay. Do we have any items to add to the consent agenda? Seeing none. This brings us up, I should have looked up, seeing none. This brings us up to our first public comment period. This is the comment period that is focused on items on the agenda. If I could have the sign-in sheet? Thank you. There's so many names. Thank you. Oh, geez. Mr. Markill.
Hello.
First and only.
Excuse me.
Welcome to the podium.
Adam Markill, Forge Delory Lane, President of the Nashville Teachers Union. I have two things this evening. First, the secretary's contract passed the membership this afternoon, 27 to 1, so we're hoping that we'll have a positive vote tonight and send it to the Board of Alderman. My question concern not clear on policy BEDB. Did the amendment in HR now require there to be a quorum of the board committee at every negotiation session? And if so, if there is not at least two board members, are we canceling sessions if that happens? Traditionally, and I'm not suggesting that the board or the district is required to do this, this is just historically, the, for the teachers' contract, there have been three or four board members. For the secretary, food service, and paras, there have been one. I can't speak to the others, but if there's a change, you know, that's your prerogative. I'm not suggesting that you can't. I just want clarification in that policy, that are you requiring a quorum to be there? Because I think that could be problematic scheduling at times, and if we have one of those last-minute emergency things happen, are we now canceling those sessions? So those are my questions, that the amendments, you know, I understood what they were trying to do and made sense, but now I want to make sure that we're not pigeonholing ourselves into something that may not have been the intent of the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this brings us up into superintendent's comments. Dr. Andre, I will give you the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to start my comments tonight with an update on the altercation that happened earlier this month outside the North Gym following a basketball game between North and Manchester Memorial. Well, much hasn't been said publicly. Please note that there has been a lot of action behind the scenes. Again, we're dealing with our students here, and we need to respect their privacy in the policy and procedures in that regard. So please know we are working with the Nashville Police Department, the Nashville North Administrators to look and investigate into that horrific incident. We are addressing it. We are following the proper protocols and disciplinary procedures and have met with students who were involved along with their families. I feel it's important, with the gravity of the situation, that the public should know that there have been a number of arrests leading up to felony charges. That we let it be known that the safety of the school is paramount in these situations. We are also counseling the students and their families about their learning plans moving forward as, again, from the, from the school side, there has been some extensive disciplinary actions involved in that. And again, we will not disclose what's going on, but please know that we are working with these families moving forward. And then I must say that it has been difficult and unfortunate for all of us involved, but we owe it to our families and staff to know that we will not condone the fighting, and we are committed to providing a safe learning environment in our schools. So again, I think action speaks louder than words and what's being said on, in public comments, but please know that there has been action behind the scenes, and we do owe it to all of our students involved in the situation to protect their privacy as well. And so, again, hopefully, working as a community, we'll be able to move forward and ensure the, both our students, our school community, and the adults in the building, that we are committed to a safe learning environment. On more uplifting news, the Elaine Van Dyke Award. Congratulations to our school breakfast champions. Dahlia Dagel, our food service director, and her staff won the first statewide Elaine Van Dyke Award for going above and beyond for our students by advocating for good nutrition. NSD is leading the way to promoting the importance of breakfast on school days. Ms. Dagel was presenting the Van Dyke School Breakfast Champion Award at the New Hampshire Food and Nutrition Security Summit earlier this month. We are proud of her, of the dedication of the food service staff. Certainly a well-deserved award for all. DECA success for both North and South. Congratulations to Nashville High School North and Nashville High School South DECA students who competed at the state level earlier this month and earned the opportunity to compete on the international level. They will join winners from the other 49 states and from Canada, Germany, and Japan at the 2023 International Career Development DECA event in April in Orlando, Florida. DECA is for students interested in marketing. Students compete in individual role plays, team role plays, and/or written events that are designed to develop their leadership skills. It is great to see so many students compete again after the COVID-19 hiatus. Congratulations to our DECA teams. K registration. This is the second year of online registration, and it's working. Having online registration has allowed a convenient way for our families to submit forms and to confirm the spelling of names, addresses, and contact information. In the first 24 hours of online registration earlier this month, we had, we registered 91 K students. We now have registered over 200. If you know, if you know, if you have or know of a family or a neighbor who has a child turning five years old by September 30th, please ask them to log into the nashville.edu to register for a K. Professional development, I think a lot was said already today. I want to thank Dr. Soffte, our administrators, our teachers, staff, and everyone who was involved today. It was a great day of learning. Our dedication and of all was evident. I don't think I left North for most of the day, and I walked close to five miles between the auditorium and B and C wing. It was just so fabulous to listen to the conversations, both with our internal and external facilitators. So it really inspired me, and again, just reinforced the potential this district has thanks to all the adults involved. So great day of professional learning today. And lastly, just an update, I had a great day, and I think both Warren and Dante were there. I was able to attend the Nashville High School North and South Student Voice meeting two weeks ago. It was about three, four hours long, and it was about 50 students who participated in the, in the event. That's, that's driving our work around the portrait of a learner. And some of the questions, then we talk about school safety, that they were addressing leads to more increased school safety. So one of the questions that they were grappling with, and I'm hope, I can't wait for the results. So the question was, how do schools show, show that students matter? And that's a deep question. And we had 50 students reflecting on how they feel heard, seen, valued, and listened to. And through the three hours that I was there, the conversations were around, do you have a trusted adult? Someone you could turn to on a daily basis? And I think once we can create that culture where students have someone they can talk to when they're feeling up, down, or whatever it is, that's how we start really talking about school safety and the incidents so that we could be more proactive than reactive. Other things that came out of a couple quotes there from this, from our students. Inspire me with real-world learning opportunities. Connect me with people and places to broaden my world. So again, I think if we look at that question they were grappling with, a couple of their quotes, the research that Dr. Soffte went over tonight, picture what our schools might look like. So I think we're moving in the right direction because we have many voices involved and we're following the research. So today was an excellent, excellent day, and so I just want to commend everybody involved, and again, the district for going to our students and asking the hard questions. So that is what continuous improvement looks like. So thank you.
Thank you. Board responds to superintendent's comments. We can just popcorn? I know we don't normally do it like that. Does anybody have anything to respond? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Andre. I just wanted to just thank you and to thank Ms. Jingeris and the administrators here at North for addressing the situation after the basketball game head-on. I know that both you and some of the principals here were actually dealing with the situation as it was unfolding, and I appreciate that. But what I appreciate most is that we are allowing our students who have made clearly a very significant error in judgment to learn and grow and deal with the consequences privately without all of their information out in the public sphere, because I think social media is one of those things that kids today have that can haunt them for a long time that was very different than, you know, 25 years ago when I was in school and fights happened. So thank you for that. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the people who participated in the professional development today and who brought that information to us. That was, it's really cool, and I'm excited to see where it goes, so.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to Dr. Andre because he could have jumped the gun and put information out about the incident that happened, but he took his time and did an investigation and made sure that everybody who were involved in this, that he spoke to the parents, and he made sure that the punishment fit, I guess, the crime. It's sad that we have these things happen, but you know, even when I went to school, kids had fights, but it gets, it escalates too much now. And if the students realize that there's consequences, maybe they'll think about it the next time that it happens. And I want to say thank you for your investigation, and it's, and because they're students under the FERPA, we can't release the information anyway. We know what happened, and hopefully, we can move on from this. And I want to thank the Nashville Police for helping out also. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Dagel and all our students from North and South. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oden?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to echo Ms. Raymond and Ms. Johnson. I want to thank Dr. Andre and all of his staff who dealt with that very tough issue. You weren't making, there to make headlines in the newspaper, but to do your job and to hopefully have those students learn from what happened. So thank you so much for the way you handled it so tactfully. Thank you.
Ms. Darling?
Yay for being the unpopular one tonight. I've heard a lot from the community about it being just a little fight, and that bothers me. I feel like people are minimizing an incident that happened, one that's led to, you said, felony-level charges for even one person. That's an extreme incident to me, and I don't want to see anyone minimizing it into just another everyday fight. And I'm personally thankful because, you know, as board members, we get weekly newsletters from Dr. Andre, and he has been nothing but transparent with us. I'm looking at FERPA right now, and I'm wondering what would be violated in FERPA if, say, the weekly newsletters that we receive from Dr. Andre were to be public district-wide emails? Let's open up that transparency, not just to us at this table, at tables, but to the actual public so that they know when with something like this- actual public so that they know when, with something like this happens. Manchester Superintendent gave a statement so quickly and all anyone heard from us was silence. Just imagine for a second, most of us have kids, several of us have kids in school. It's terrifying to look at my 11-year-old and say, yeah, of course you're safe going to school, sweetheart. Of course, nothing like that ever happens. I'm sick of lying. I want my kid to know what's going on. I want the public to know what's going on because that's the only way we're going to get the public to trust us. So if it's truly a FERPA violation, I'm not asking that we break any laws, of course, but if it's not, maybe we should consider opening up the newsletter like that to the public. Thoughts? Anyone? Someone look at, anyone other than me?
Well, I'd like to remind, this isn't a time for discussion. This is just a response to the superintendent's comments. So that, that's certainly something that, you know, we can talk about at a future time, but I think right now is, we're a very thoughtful board and we like to gather our thoughts before we enter into those kinds of conversations. So this is something that we can, not, not to kick the can down the road, but to let everybody organize themselves and think about what they, what they want, have conversations with administration, speak with corporate counsel, verify that we're doing everything that we're supposed to be doing. But I'd hate to respond to that and try to make rules and regulations off the top of our heads without thinking. I want to reiterate what Ms. Johnson and Ms. Raymond stated. Obviously, our kids being safe in school is paramount, but I want to support our administration in what they decided to do, which was following policy, following the law. And I think what we did, and one of the things that we have to remember is that there's a difference between punishment and discipline. And we're talking about students, the main goal is to teach them, which is the purpose of discipline. Punishment is to, I mean, there's an element of punishment that needs to happen, but the purpose of having students in school is to teach them to do better. And I think our administration responded in the most appropriate fashion to allow that to happen. And I think by allowing the families' privacy and knowing that they're working with our schools and how they can best meet their students' needs while keeping the rest of the students safe is all we need to know because I think that's what's most important is that we're still offering learning opportunities even to kids who've made obviously a poor decision.
Which I do love. I love that we are still working with them. And I'm not saying we should release names. I'm not saying we should publicly embarrass anybody. Just the simple statistic of, yes, we are working with the police, you know, it doesn't even, you don't even need to say how many people are actively in trouble. We gave no statement at first. And that doesn't look great when the public already thinks that we're hiding stuff. So I just don't know how that could ever be fixed in the future, but I have to say out of every, in the last year, I believe that the school district has improved tenfold already just with what Dr. Andre has done and the changes that he has put forward. So my big thing that I want to make very clear here is I think we are doing the right thing. I love every aspect of what we are doing here. I want to share what we're doing with the public because I want to bring them in and I think that they deserve to know that we are fighting for their kids' health, safety, education, their futures.
Right. I agree. I think I had a, I had something I was going to say. It just flew out of my head. Are you calling me a senior, Ms. Johnson? Oh, that's exactly what I was going to say. It was about respect. Sometimes I think when we take a beat and we think about our reactions and our responses, it actually shows an element of respect. And I, I don't look at it as we didn't respond appropriately or quickly enough, as I think that we gave everybody enough time. Like I said, let's not talk about this right now. Let's give everybody a minute to gather our thoughts. That's respectful. And I think when we don't jump the gun and we don't present all of this information immediately and we take a minute, shows the, the kids who necessarily weren't in the fight, but maybe who may be in a fight next time, to know, you know what, I'm still going to be treated with respect even if I make a bad choice. And that's going to help me build the relationships with administrators. That's going to help me build relationships with the teachers with guidance, knowing that bad decisions don't always define you for the rest of your life. And I think when we take a minute, it allows other students to recognize that there is grace in mistakes. A fight like this is not a mistake. A fight like this deserves punishment and police involvement and everything that was supposed to happen, but you know, there's, there's a difference between this and then shoving somebody in the hallway. And I think when kids make that kind of choice, when they're that angry, when they know that they have a respectful administration working for them, they're more likely to go to their teacher and be like, I just, I'm so angry right now and I can't. It just gives them another avenue to talk, so.
And I absolutely appreciate that. I just wish that my child hadn't found out about the fight via a neighbor's TikTok account and reading all the comments saying, fights happen all the time at NSD. No one does anything about it because that's the public narrative. I want to change that.
Right. Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to let my board colleague know, I don't take any of these things very lightly, but if you jump the gun too fast sometimes and you give out the wrong information, we look worse. Then transparency didn't work. We gave out the wrong information without investigating what happened here. And when I talk about FERPA, I talk about you don't, we can't let these kids' identity be put out there. I think our administration did a great job because we don't know, I don't know what Manchester put out. I don't go on TikTok and maybe kids shouldn't be on TikTok.
Agreed, but it's there everywhere.
But I guess, I understand it's there, but the problem is, is some people, and I know some of the people who jumped the gun, and I know all the complaints that went out to different agencies here, and sometimes you just have to let, we have a whole new administration. Maybe you didn't trust the past, but we have to move past the, the past and look at our new administration that's trying to do something here. And so some of the people started writing letters ahead of time before anything was even investigated. It happened that night, the letters went out, boom, boom, boom. And you know what? Transparency, I agree with that 100%, but there are some times when our students are involved, you just can't put out information that's going to be false and it's going to hurt other students. So that's why Manchester put out, could have been wrong information. What do you do when the wrong information goes out? Now you're going to backtrack and you really look like idiots rather than looking like a school district that's showing the transparency and that we're trying to work and make sure our students understand that this is unacceptable behavior. Thank you.
Okay. So can, can we start tempering down the conversation because I just want to move on with the agenda? I think we're just going to start saying the same things over and over again.
I am absolutely not saying we should ever jump the gun on reporting anything. I'm saying that we've received two newsletters from Dr. Andre that pertain to this situation. The information hasn't changed. It's been factual. It's been very clearly written out in a way that does not indicate who anything happened to. And I agree with you, Ms. Johnson, wholeheartedly. Our, this administration is, I think personally, one of the best mashup of amazing people that we've seen in a very long time in this district. And that's part of the reason why I love the idea of making a newsletter public because Dr. Andre deserves to be known for this work that he is doing and because I truly believe the public would like to see the, the stuff that's happening, not because I want to see anything started.
So maybe the president of the board can sit down with Dr. Andre, bring it back to the full board, and we can have some type of policy written that we can have a newsletter, something go out to the public more, which he does anyway, but in issues like this, this has to be handled sometimes a little bit differently than the regular newsletter. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else?
I do have a question that has nothing to do with this. If somebody doesn't have access to a computer, what is the best way for them to sign their kid up for kindergarten?
They still can go to one of the schools, local school, and do it the old-fashioned way.
Beautiful. For anyone wondering, library has computers free for use and the librarians there, wonderful, and will help you navigate everything you need.
Sorry, I was checking my email. Okay. Any other comments or questions in regards to the superintendent's comments? Seeing none, let's move on. I closed out my thing. Hold on, sorry. I like to just check things off, take a minute, reconfigure. Okay. So this brings us up to the student member of the board comments. Did you guys decide who's going first?
It's going to be Duncan.
Okay, good.
All right. Thank you. So I'm just going to start off with, recently I've had this survey sent out to the South Student Body, essentially asking students to report on their general feelings and opinions about South in regards to like safety, enjoyment of going to school, that kind of stuff. And so far, 27 students have responded. Technically, we wanted them to have it done by like last Friday, I think, but I don't think, I think students could still have access to it if they'd like. And 15 have actually provided a written response rather than just rating things on a scale of one to five and stuff like that. And pleasantly, surprisingly to me, the majority of students said they actually, they feel like safe going to school every day. I was glad to see that students like took it seriously and didn't just, I don't know, put something outrageous or random. And the majority also said that they feel like excited going to school every day at South. And the topic that the majority of students would like to learn more about and develop a better understanding of is the new class rank and weighted GPA system. And it'd be nice, I've looked at the South Guidance, Nashua South Guidance, they have a website and it actually lays out, lays out how the new system is going to work. So hopefully the students can check out those resources and then also ask their guidance counselors if they have any additional questions about that. And then one big problem that students would like addressed is the bathrooms, but obviously Mr. Richard has assured me that this is being worked on and I'm pretty sure, yeah, some bathrooms have opened up. I know a lot of them were closed, but they're starting to open up. And then moving on, Dr. Andre, he, well, he mentioned this, but it was nice to see him at the Student Voice Joint Meeting a couple Fridays ago. I feel like it was pretty good. And another point of that meeting, I think, as Mr. Oddly, an assistant principal, as South mentioned, was eventually we could try to implement our school-wide competencies more, which are like citizenship, responsibility, and a couple others, I believe. And that's something, if you don't know, it's something on the report card. Students are supposed to get like a score of how well they're meeting those different competencies. I think one is also like, I mentioned it, citizenship, but yeah, so just looking to actually use those more and gets people to know what they mean. Moving on to athletics, both South, I mean, both South girls and boys are going to be playing Spalding tomorrow for basketball. Today is actually, I believe, a Battle of the Bridge-type game for ice hockey between South and Pelham and then North and what team are they combined with? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, but one, yeah, one of the combined teams. And unfortunately, North did win, but it's just hockey. And then this week, obviously, leading up to February break, we have Spirit Week. Tomorrow is going to be Royalty Day, which is something new. I believe it's just dressed like royalty, which is like, purple is known to be the color of royalty. I think that's what it came down to, so. And then Wednesday is Pyjama Day. Thursday and Friday are both purple and white day. And both of those days, there's actually going to be pep rallies. Thursday is for sophomores and freshmen and Friday is for juniors and seniors. So a lot of students are probably looking forward to those. We haven't had actual pep rallies in a long time. And yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Last Friday, February 17th, I held the first of many E-Bloc meetings. Just to recap, these meetings are an opportunity for the students of Nashua North to meet with me and discuss any concerns as well as ask me any questions about upcoming board meetings. The next E-Bloc meeting will be March 10th in the Career Center. Also, just a reminder that Nashua North is always accepting food donations of non-perishable items. These donations can be dropped off to security labeled Titan Food Pantry. This is an extremely important resource for students of Nashua North and I think it's important to try and help this program as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll hand this over to Ms. Johnson for the Committee on Finance and Operations.
And pretty soon it's going to be budget.
Yes. Are you excited?
I think so. That's a big, heavy committee. Okay, thank you. The Committee on Finance and Operations, we met February 7th, 2023. I moved to approve the purchase of touchscreen Chromebooks from IT Insiders totaling $334,544 and the Chromebook cards from Earthwalk totaling $39,649. Funding for these purchases is Title I-A account.
Just a second.
That's okay.
What were you going to say, Ms. Johnson?
I said, I think that's self-explanatory.
Yes. Yes. What's a Chromebook? No, I'm just kidding.
Is there any benefit to switching to the touchscreen Chromebook versus the, the traditional one that they had? I would have just been worried about people breaking them faster.
The reason we're doing this because some of the students can't use keyboards and this is why they're doing, I went through that whole questioning period that night.
First and second grade.
I figured you would have.
Yeah, they have a problem with that. Because I thought until I heard the presentation that it would be good for motor skills for them to be able to use the keyboards, but no.
Do we not teach typing anymore?
We do later on, but it's for the, for this to K through two, yeah, K through two, that they need the Chromebook's touchscreen.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Brown seconded. Motion, Ms. Brown seconded. Any other comments or questions? Just for the record, Ms. Raymond stepped out at, is it already 7:30?
Mm-hmm.
Oy, she stepped out at 7:27, so the vote will reflect her as an absence. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes seven to zero.
I moved to approve the purchase of 390 Neo-shaped student desks from School Specialty for a total of $103,236.90. Funding is coming from Title I-A account.
Second?
Thank you.
Does anybody need an explanation on this? Okay, they're kind of locked together so you can move around and have different configurations.
Oh, cool.
And when I first, again, I kind of questioned this whole thing because I thought, why not have the desk with the little, you know, storage underneath? Because typical, that's where I, you know, I'm, I'm up there in age, I guess, you know, I think about it that way. That's where I would think. And then I said, you could store papers in there and every, and Mr. Claffey, you know, kind of got my brain out of there. You see what's in those desks sometimes.
They have so many snacks, so much gum.
So this, is it sticking to it? But this way they can move it around, you know, to do what they need to do in the classrooms, so.
Cool.
Yes, Ms. Lepier?
I was just wondering what we were going to do with the desks, the, the older desks. Are they going to be used by anyone or will they just be thrown away?
They were going to be used in some other classrooms, weren't they, Ms. Donovan?
Well, we'll use them if we need them. There could be some excess desks, though.
Okay, thank you.
But if there's too much gum in it, then we probably won't use it.
Well, these are replacing, what, the purple chairs with the, with the gray tops? Right, those, the sliding for high school?
This is elementary.
Elementary, sorry.
Yeah. So I don't think there's too much gum in elementary, is there?
You need special permission to chew gum in elementary school, usually in your 504 or IEP, in case anyone's curious.
Just to note, Ms. Raymond arrived back at 7:30. So all those in favor of approving the purchase of 390 Neo-shaped student desks, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just like to point out, I didn't vote because I missed the discussion.
So it's still seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I moved to approve the purchase of five engineering workbenches from Form A Space at a cost of $12,177.95. Funding to come from the Perkins Grant.
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any questions or comments? Okay. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to accept the invoices over $10,000 annual report.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the FY '23 January budget transfers.
Second. Thank you. So Johnson and Raymond, Johnson and Brown again. Comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that's the end of my report for this.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Committee on Policy, I will toss the floor over to Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. I'm just trying to scroll through all of these purchase information so that I can get to my policies and read them out properly. Boy, we had a lot. Okay. So the first policy I have is policy B E D L. So I move that we approve B E D L.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Raymond, Ms. Darling. Any comments or questions in regards to B E D L?
This policy is regarding the approval of expenditures and it just says that we have to have the money in order to pay for things. Can't spend money we don't have.
Good old fashioned budget tip right there.
And it hasn't been changed since 2009, so it's easy peasy.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The next policy is I move that we approve policy D B J as amended, well, as presented.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Darling.
Okay, so this one is regarding transfers of appropriations. So for example, if we need to spend more than we have appropriated for a specific, specific expense, we need to follow RSA 3210 and then any transfers in excess of $5,000 still need to be voted on by the board as we do in Finance and Operations and here. So those are the only changes.
Ms. Brown.
My question, we haven't, actually haven't been, the part that was struck out about the President of the Board, we hadn't actually been doing that anyway, right?
No, and it wasn't required by law and I, I don't think, Mr. Donovan, have we done that anytime in the last, like, 15 years?
No, I, since I've been here, we haven't asked in advance if we could do it. It's just, especially as you get on in the year, it would slow up the whole process, so. But we do, as you mentioned, bring them each month and the Board can review them and approve them.
And just for public knowledge, we struck out the part that said that the President of the Board could preemptively approve expenditures of $5,000 or more.
Thank you.
Which, sorry, we've taken that away from you. We do do this in the Joint Special School Building Committee.
Like time-sensitive stuff.
Because of time-sensitive with building, but that's a joint committee between the Alderman and the Board of Education. And that was a special authorization for that committee for particular projects, so.
Yeah, I can't see Mr. Donovan being like, we have to spend $6,000, Jen!
No.
Okay. No other comments or questions? All those in favor of approving policy B D J, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. So the next policy, I move that we approve policy D B J, transfer of appropriation as presented.
You mean D B J R?
Nope, D B J.
No, this is R.
Wait.
We just did D B J.
Oh, yes, you're right. I'm sorry, there's an extra page in my packet. D B J R as presented. Thank you. And the only change to this one is a change to the Expendable Trust Fund numerical identification number, account number.
Okay.
Yes, that was the old system number. We put in our new system about eight years ago, nine years ago, so.
We're supposed to review these policies every four years.
We are. Should we have, I mean, isn't it required to have an account number on the policy? This is something I was going back and forth in my head about, like, if we just have, I mean, we've, we've named it, but we don't have the, if we didn't have the number in there, would that be a problem?
I, I don't think it would be a significant problem. It's, I believe this one was put together back right before I got here when we had the famous $6 million problem. That's when that policy was put in place and I believe the reason for putting it in place was to say, okay, we found the $6 million, here's another 150 if you run into some problems. So that's really all that is and I, they probably wrote the policy at that point in time. So, but we, we don't list every single reserve account we have in a policy. That's probably the only one.
I wouldn't be opposed to removing the account number just for ease of use with the policies and not needing to bring them back every single time maybe we need to update an account unless, of course, it's required to be in there by some sort of RSA, but it seems like a weird Post-it note to keep on your computer or monitor. At least that's how I keep my to-do lists.
No, there's no RSA governing it and this is, it's basically a contingency fund that we have.
Okay.
I like having the policy, but I don't know if having the count number in there is problematic or not. That's why I asked.
Then I, I move to make an amend, I move to amend to strike the account number from the policy.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. Is that okay? No mind? Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment to strike the account number from policy B E D, sorry, B D J dash R?
D B.
D B J. What am I, I think I need to put my glasses on. Having another senior moment here, Ms. Johnson.
I have it every day.
Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none? Do you, now let's go back to the motion. The motion to approve B, Jiminy Christmas, the motion to approve D B J dash R as amended.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay.
We already have that.
That's what I thought, yeah. That's why I was, I was looking off into space going, I don't think we need to make.
I'm like, senior moment, but we're going back to it.
Yeah, we can just sit together and come up with a full sentence at some point. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. This is another finance one. I move to approve D I, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting.
Second. Thank you. You want to speak to this one, too?
This one is another one that we haven't looked at since 2009 and the only change we made was we're not doing quarterly reports summarizing the financial condition of the district. We're doing our forecasting reports during April and June when we do kind of our budget for the year. And then we will continue to have the monthly reports showing anything for transfers or anything in our Finance Committee meetings.
Okay.
So we haven't done, I don't remember the last time we did a quarterly report and it seems like extra paperwork without extra assistance.
Yes, I believe some districts do a quarterly report as opposed to a monthly. We do it monthly, so we do it more frequently than they do.
Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Brown made that motion, Ms. Darling seconded it.
Raymond.
What did I say?
Brown.
I said, Ms. Brown? I just flipped the both of you.
These moments of getting, oh my gosh.
More coffee.
No, it's because I went to bed at like, like nine o'clock, like I got a full night worth of sleep, so I'm just like, man, I'm in a good mood today. So my brain doesn't.
Mouth glasses might help.
My what?
Mouth glasses for your speaking.
Yes.
Sorry, out of order.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The next, the next policy, I move that we approve policy D I dash R, which is financial, I'm sorry, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting Regulations.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for seconding Ms. Raymond's initial motion.
There are no changes to this policy since 2007.
Okay.
Finance runs like clockwork.
Yes.
So.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. I move to approve policy I H A K, Character and Citizenship Education.
Second.
Thank you. This policy hasn't been updated since 2008. We had a lot of discussion about this one over the course of a couple different policy meetings. And basically, we are significantly following, we've just kind of renumbered things to make sure that we have included what the New Hampshire School Board Association recommends. And then you'll see that there's a legal reference, RSA 18613-2 crossed out. It's because we put that in there thinking that we needed to reference it, but it wasn't, it's not a legal reference for this policy. That reference has to do with appropriating money and not how we teach kids anything.
I have a question.
Ms. Darling?
So one of the things that shocked me when I turned 18 was that we don't have a majority vote for president. It's a plurality. And I didn't even know what a plurality was until I was like 30. In here, it states how one of the things that we're required to teach is that a democratic government is established by majority vote. A majority and a plurality are different. Shouldn't we teach what we use, the plurality?
Well, that line, number 13, comes from the RSA 306-6 and 30604A5. So that's where it came from. Maybe take it up with the state.
The state that, Mr. Claffey is just ready to jump right in.
And I, I was going to say, we could ask Mr. Claffey and also Mr. Pasca had spoken to us at committee and in our other thing about some of the citizenship work that we're doing now that's now required by state law. I'll shut up, go ahead, Neil.
Mr. Pasca.
No, we do have a civics aspect that we have implemented. I think this came before the Board a couple weeks ago about what we're doing. I think we, all students have to pass civics test by the conclusion of the school year. I think this, what the interesting part about this policy was the concern about RSA 18613 when Ms. Raymond contacted the NHSBA, asking, you know, where does this come from in regards to the need for the, for the policy? I think interestingly enough, it was kind of a policy that was, a law that was from, what, 1920 in regards to the Red Scare and making sure we were taught, in New Hampshire, they were taught the qualities of an American citizen. So had been there on the books for quite some time, kind of an interesting legal reference to get us there, but they also had said that we do not need to have that, so that's why we struck it from the policy.
Okay.
That's your history lesson from the day, unless Mr. Claffey wants to continue.
Bad mistake, Bill.
Go ahead.
Unless the Constitution's been amended, it is a majority in the Electoral College that decides, correct?
You're the teacher.
But I've been out of the, I haven't taught civics in a year and a half, but I just, I don't think it's been amended yet, right? Although there's certainly talk.
I would say as the person here who I think was in high school last, I did not learn that in civics, but we also were not required to take government until the year after I left.
Don't look at me. I had fun in high school.
We have the best social studies department in the state of New Hampshire.
We do.
So we should have them come in and educate me.
At South.
Me specifically. The rest of you, I'm sure, already know is the difference between a plurality and a majority, right?
You know, Mr. Claffey was, was the head teacher down there, so. Right, head social studies at South? Just three years. So you only know a little bit. Okay, well, thank you for that discussion. That's always fun to have in here. Going back to I H A K, Ms. Raymond made the motion, who seconded?
Christina Darling.
Ms. Darling seconded. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy I H A K, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so. Turned off my thing. The next policy is policy I K C. I move that we approve I K C as amended.
Second.
Thank you. This one was a typo that we are fixing. Which I try not to let get all the way to the Board before we do it. We just approved it a month ago here at the Board level and then discovered that we had a typo in it, so. I thought we should actually vote on fixing the typo.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the typo in policy I K C, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move that we approve policy I K F A, Early Graduation.
Second.
There are no changes to this policy in New Hampshire under ED 30627. Students are allowed to graduate early if they have completed the number of credits and specific courses that are required to graduate. That is no different here in Nashua, but our policy is that parents, parents have to be involved if the student is not 18 yet and you have to request it one semester, like a full semester before you want to graduate. So if you want to graduate in December instead of June, you have to request it the spring before.
Like how you get rid of a gym membership.
Right. We require a very lengthy, you know, end of commitment.
Yeah.
And there's a policy, there's a process by which you do. You have to write a letter and you have to meet with the principal.
What's the procedure if, if a student changes their mind and wants to continue on?
It's not part of the policy.
Can they just revoke it, say, I want to stay?
No.
You guys put some new classes in, I want to take them?
We do a do.
You do it, you do?
Yeah, redo.
Okay.
I don't think that's, I don't, that's a good question. I don't know if it has come up. I do know in my conversation with Mr. Burns, Mr. Richard, this is policy, it's been in place for, for at least during the tenure, that it does come up often. I think some of the examples they use is sometimes for some military commitments, they've seen this come up.
Ms. Brown?
One of our previous student members of the Boards did that, but I think that they're pretty, they make you commit a long time in advance, but if you want to change your mind, I think they're pretty cool about letting the student have flexibility in that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, somebody wasn't stuck with their decision if they decided to stay on.
Don't let the door hit you.
Pretty much. Okay. So any other comments or questions? Seeing, oh, for the record, Mr. Claffey stepped out at?
7:50.
7:49. Okay, so all those in favor of approving policy I K F A, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Last one, I think. Yes, last one. I move that we approve policy K B, which is Title I, Family and Community Engagement.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Raymond, Ms. Darling. Comments, questions? Do you want to speak to this a little bit?
Sure. So Mr. Pasca and our Title I Coordinator went over this, obviously with a fine-toothed comb. We've really updated the language to be a little bit more inclusive regarding family and community engagement as opposed to just parent involvement in education. And then we've really been very specific about the types of activities that the school is required to engage in in order to involve parents and guardians in the instruction of their children and in the, the operating of the school in general. This applies to our Title I elementary schools, but I, I will say that I think, if not all, most of our elementary schools are kind of following this already and I've, I've seen some work on some of the same things in the middle and high schools as well, so.
Okay.
So, there is, there's a lot of red, but it's, a lot of it is just being really specific about what we're actually doing.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Okay. And now, that brings us up, back up to...
Oh, I have one more thing, sorry.
Yeah.
Just an FYI, March is looking complicated for scheduling of meetings. We have school vacation, and then March happens, there's some professional development, there's some other stuff going on in March. So, the policy meeting is tentative right now and subject to change. Mr. Poska and I are looking at his calendar, and the board calendar, and the budget calendar, and trying to figure out what we can do. So, I will be emailing the policy committee meeting.
I'm, I'm gonna be out of the country the 3rd through the 11th, so...
And Ms. Lambert will be out the 3rd through the 11th, so we will look at that, too. So, I just wanted to let people know that, to keep an eye on your emails, because policy might change if we can find another day for it.
Yeah. Yeah, anytime we can make things easier is fantastic. Okay. Ms. Brown, Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation.
All right, thank you. We met on February 15th, and so, our first recommendation, I move to approve the SAP contract between the Youth Council and the Nashua School District in the amount of $92,300 funded by Title I funding.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, thank you, Ms. Darling. Comments or questions? Oh, and Mr. Claffey returned at?
7:53.
7:53, thank you. Okay. That was quick. Sorry, I heard you. I have a question about this, and this is more in regards to, do we have, what is the process that parents can go through to request services from the Youth Council within schools? Do they have to go through the Youth Council to get it, or they go through, do they go through guidance or some other school administration?
So, just to be clear, the SAPs don't provide therapy, right?
The suspension room, right?
Nope, so, so they're, so they're counselors within the school, but they don't provide therapy. So, one of the things that Casey Castor from Youth Council talked about is how the SAPs are able to provide support sort of during like that holding time. It's really hard for, for families to be able to access mental health resources outside of our schools, and so, the counselors can provide some temporary support for students who are struggling. They can also assist with students who are dealing with substance abuse issues and just kind of like everyday stressors, but for true intensive therapy, they don't provide that. When it comes to referrals for, for students, typically, those referrals would come from guidance and or administration.
Okay. Yeah, this is, I mean, the waiting list for, for children getting into therapy is months and months long. So, it's great that we have this kind of bridge program, but, I mean, regular intensive therapy is fantastic, and it's a shame that we don't have enough of it for all of our students, but this is great. Ms. Brown?
She covered it.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. Brown made the motion, Ms. Darling seconded. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So, our next recommendation, I move to approve the contract for Lexia Core 5 in the amount of $70,434 funded by Title I funds. And actually, you heard the teachers talk about Lexia this evening. This is a tool that the teachers can use to both assess students in a more frequent manner. It's a nice and quick and easy exam. Not exam, it's like a little lesson. Go ahead.
Yes, so it does yield some valuable data, but it's really used as a tier-two intervention source.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Raymond?
Did it get a second? I'll second it.
Okay.
But I do have a question. I'm just curious about, is this only going to the Title I schools? Or will it go to all the elementary schools?
So, right now, we have four non-Title schools using Lexia.
Okay.
We have the reimbursement of Title funds, and that can only be used for Title schools, so that's why we've included the five Title schools in this.
Great, thank you.
And I would like to apologize, I actually reversed the Acadians and the Lexia, which is the next item on our agenda. She gave a better description of what Lexia Core is.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving the contract for Lexia Core, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. The next motion is, I move to approve the contract with the Acadians as presented in the amount of $26,667.90 to be paid for out of Title I and operating budget funds.
I'll second that one, too.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond.
So, again, this is, the Lexia Core is mostly about phonological awareness, phonics, structure analysis, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. This is more like a universal screener and for monitoring progress for early literacy skills. So, we talked about a lot of these items in the presentation earlier this evening. And the reason this is from Title I and also operating budget funds is because we like to make sure that everyone has this district-wide.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract with the Acadians, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that is the last thing for this evening from the curriculum evaluation, thank you.
Excellent. I'm excited to see the data numbers change as we engage these kind of tools. Yes. Okay, so now, we head on, we head on over to the Committee on Human Resources, which Ms. Johnson thankfully stepped up and was chaired tonight so that Ms. Gilio could protect us all from her coughing.
I offered her chicken soup today. I didn't get an answer. She said, "Thank you." Okay, not a problem. I move to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR Committee meeting held earlier this evening. We held it around 5:45, we were a little bit late this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the personnel recommendations of February 20, 2023.
Second.
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Oden seconded. Any comments or questions on the personnel recommendations? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve BDEB Human Resources Committee.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
I'm looking for a second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. So, that opens up some discussion. I did want to address some of the points that Mr. Marku had brought up earlier in regards to, you know, kind of what constitutes a quorum, not what constitutes a quorum, but what happens if we are saying that a quorum, so at least two people need to be present for negotiating meetings, what does that mean? If there are last-minute cancellations, does that mean we have to now cancel the meeting and reschedule? I know that I put only one person on each negotiating committee this time around, just to free up people's schedules. But I was hoping that maybe administration could speak to what happens if we don't have two, or whoever made the motion to have a quorum could speak to their change.
Yeah, so, it just has been my experience in all kind of HR, when we see, look at the roles and responsibilities of the HR Subcommittee, it is around defining salary benefits, and that's the work of the Subcommittee, so I think there's a natural alignment between that's, that's the crux of their work. So, I think there should be an obligation to kind of attend those meetings. So, in my previous districts, two or three districts, that's the way it functioned, the HR, and it was, as I mentioned, in the HR Subcommittee, it was a public notification, so it was, again, like, we didn't know when we were meeting, it went through, it was posted, we went into executive session. So, there was really detail and really responsibility. So, if you knew there was going to be a conflict going up, you know, it was already on your calendar. So, it wasn't like a last-minute notification, so there was that, again, clarity on where you're going. As far as if there's last-minute things, unfortunately, sometimes life happens, and so, that shouldn't be the norm where life kind of, like, where there is an emergency. But I think we should really have positive intentions, saying that this is our commitment of the Subcommittee or the HR Committee, and we are going to meet our obligations. So, that was my recommendation, to really get into that crux of the work and, and again, work with our, the, our, with the unions on making sure that we schedule at times that are accommodating to both parties as well. So, I think that's important as we kind of move forward, so that we meet everybody's family obligations and work obligations. So, I think that's part of the negotiations and setting the norms and the culture of how we negotiate.
Can you, who, who, did you make the motion on needing to? Who made the motion on needing to, present for all negotiations?
It was kind of, we kind of talked about it for a little bit, but I think it basically came up to being, we wanted to support the administration in their goal to have a quorum of committee members, to make it so that it had a more formalized format. Well, our real edit was, Ms. Oden was concerned that the wording had it, that all committee members had to be present. We actually kind of loosened that by saying a quorum, as opposed, which only constitutes two. I think that also actually leaves up another accommodation, the way our other bylaws are written, the president can always fill in for any Subcommittee in the event of emergency, the alternate can also come in in the case of emergency. Additionally, we also put the wording in there that for some reason, if we had a member of the HR Committee, hopefully, when you assign, you sign up to be on that committee, you understand the level of commitment that comes with that responsibility, as Dr. Andre had said. But also, we put in there, the edit was, can you read the word? I think it was to also allow, a two-thirds majority of the board can also vote to assign a different member if, for some reason, there was going to be a conflict the entire time of the negotiation.
Yeah, it says, unless an alternative member is appointed by a two-thirds majority vote of the BOE.
So, I think the intent of that, this is what my impression was, that if, for some reason, either there's a conflict of interest from the negotiating, the HR Committee member, or if you know that they're always going to meet on Tuesday afternoons at 3:00 PM, and I have a part-time job or a standing appointment, we have a way to modify that. I think it was actually an intent to make it so it was more manageable for the responsibility.
Right.
And, and this is for negotiations happening after the ones that are already on the table now? So, the HR Committee now has to sit in on interviews and negotiations, and if, if we're going to be, and I'm just going to throw that out there, this out there now, if we're going to be making these kind of, kind of full board-level switches in regards to HR, maybe we don't do HR right before the board meeting so that we can best talk about this, like I said to Ms. Darling earlier, give everybody a minute to digest the information, come back to the table. So, I think if we're going to be having HR do this level of work, we need to put it on its own night and not have it be 10 minutes before our, our full board meeting. That's a lot compared to all of the, we went from HR being the 10 minutes before the board committee to now being, kind of, running the mechanisms of the district. Yeah.
I just...
Thank you.
So, this, this wouldn't affect the par contract, right?
No.
So, if I can ask Dr. Andre or Mr. Duff, assuming that goes through, when would the, aren't we good for a few years as far as contracts go? So, I'm just curious, why are we worried about this now?
So, it came up a couple of months ago, what's the role and responsibilities of the HR Subcommittee? So, reviewing the language and the roles and responsibility, this would be a change to it.
Right.
I'm just curious about the timing, that's all.
Yeah, it was just from a previous conversation on the roles and responsibilities of HR.
Yeah, this was part of the, I think, one of our first full board meetings of the year, which was examining, you know, if all HR is not, I don't want to say all, like, it's nothing, but if the main responsibility of the HR Committee is just to approve the personnel recommendations, why have an HR Committee when we can just bring that to the full board? So, that led to an organic discussion about what is the role of the HR Committee? And Ms. Oden shared with us what it was like when she was on it to start off with, and kind of how it's shifted in its, in its role, and getting back to kind of the meat of what HR was. And we had asked Ms. Gilio to work with Ms. Duffy on making the HR Committee a more robust experience, which is why we're reviewing the policies associated with it, so that we're using everybody's talents.
Can I make a motion to send this back to the HR Committee? I feel like it'd be better for them to discuss it with a little more time than they were given tonight. I don't know if anyone would want to second that.
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Oh, thanks.
Discussion?
I would say that we missed, so, I would like to hear Ms. Gilio's opinion on this. I know she's ill, and she's the head of HR Committee, but I would say that other than that, every other member plus the alternate were here this evening.
And Ms. Gilio sat with Ms. Duffy and created this.
Right, so, and we had feedback from Ms. Duffy and, and Dr. Andre. I appreciate, as coming from policy, that HR worked on an HR Committee policy, like, it made entirely more sense to have Ms. Duffy and Ms. Gilio work on it and bring it to the committee than it did to have policy try and wade its way through. I'm in favor of trying it, and then if it, if it seems like it's too big of a commitment, or if we feel like we're having to sub in other members of the board frequently, then maybe we have to look at it again. There's nothing that says that we can't bring policies back as much as we want. But I think that, I like the idea of having a system that everybody knows what it is. I liked the amendment for allowing someone to sub in, like, say someone in the HR Committee is going to have surgery, or otherwise will be out for, you know, two or three months. We can meet at the next full board meeting and say, "Hey, do we have a volunteer to take over this negotiation?" And this way, if it is part of the HR Committee, it would be properly noticed as a meeting and on our calendar. So, I think we will have less problems with people being confused about what the schedule is, if it's a noticed meeting that then goes into a non-public session, as opposed to one or two board members who gets one email from, you know, one person trying to schedule this and reschedule it. I just feel like it, it makes it a little bit more of a transparent process, so...
Does, does that mean if we're opening up the meeting because we have a quorum of a Subcommittee, does that mean we open up the meeting, go into non-public, which means we have to have somebody there with the book, taking the non-public notes? So, whoever's going to be on, one of the two people who are going to be serving on whatever negotiating team that is, has to remember that they are going to be doing?
Yep, they'll need the book because it will be a meeting, and they'll need to take minutes on the non-public sheet, and those minutes will say something along the lines of, "Met with the union to have a negotiating team committee meeting." I mean, it won't, it won't be pages and pages, there's only three lines available to you on the form.
Okay.
And that's something that we can't...
Could even modify that form to make it generic. Oh, I'm sorry about that.
So, the form is, the form came from state law, like, goes through everything that the law requires, so I would ask Ms. Cancelo to take a look at it before we alter it too much, but, but yes, so there is a, there is a for... But, but yes, so there is a, there is a four, a requirement that, when those meetings happen, that whoever is on the Committee grabs the book from administration, just like we do for every other meeting. But again, I think it, I think it will solve the problem of people forgetting that they had negotiation, or not knowing they had negotiation, or having miscommunications about it. Now, when there's a negotiation, on Friday before, we'll get that, as a Board, we get that email that says, here's all your meetings next week, and here's the agendas. This HR meeting will be a very short agenda, it'll just say negotiating with, you know, whatever secretaries or whomever. It may prove to be too much for four people, I don't know. Hopefully, we won't schedule seven union contracts in one year ever again, and we'll get this rotation where there's like two a year or something.
Ms. Brown?
Can we move the question? Call the question? I think right now, it's, the one on the table is.
One is to send it back to.
Send it back to Committee.
Committee. Um, oh yeah, well, call the question, we can't think, I'm thinking about my answer, and I am supposed to be running this, not thinking. Okay, so call the question, should we send this back to Committee? We have to do roll call, because, right, roll call? Ms. Darling, call, put it back to Committee?
No, it was me.
You have to vote to table it.
But we're sending it back to.
You have to vote on her motion.
To call the question.
Called the question.
That's, that's to call the question that's on the floor right now, with end debate.
Yeah, but if you make a motion to call the question, then we have to vote on whether or not to call the question. But I think that we have consensus on voting on the motion. Yeah?
We have to.
I'll withdraw if we are ready to call the question.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your call to question. So on the motion to send the policy back to Committee, all those in favor.
Can I ask before I vote? I need to understand. If, if this passes, have we put aside a conversation about disbanding this Committee?
So this vote is to send it back to HR Committee?
I know that, but I still want to know, is that conversation still alive, about disbanding the HR Committee?
No.
It's not, it's, it's adding to the, it's adding to their responsibilities. So let's say.
Okay, so you, so this Committee didn't talk about that?
No.
Okay.
So HR is just what it's going to be, is HR, when you sign up.
I understand, I understand. I just was wondering if that conversation is done.
Okay. So all those in favor of sending this policy back to Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor of keeping it in the full-Board meeting and voting on it now, say aye.
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 Okay. So on, on the motion to approve policy BDEB in regards to the Human Resources Committee, all those in favor of approving the policy that Ms. Johnson motioned and Ms. Raymond seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Claffey opposes. Okay, so motion passes.
So?
That's fine, I was just reading it in for the record.
I, I didn't vote yet, can I say no as well?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so. Okay.
Okay, so I'll move to approve policy CGFA, election appointment of personnel.
Second.
Oh. Okay, Ms. Brown? Ms. Johnson motioned, Ms. Brown seconded. Any comments or questions in regards to policy GF, GCFA? Can you please speak to this, just because people didn't get a chance to review the meeting?
Sure.
All it is, is that they've made a couple of changes here. It's the election appointment of personnel. So election of administrators, they added coordinators, assistant directors to, under the election of administrators. So they just added some wording. And then temporary appointments to fill vacant positions, they cross out director and add a coordinator. So that was really the whole thing on this, on this whole change.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy GCFA, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so I believe we didn't have JSSBC, so there's no, do you have, did you write updates, Mr. Claffey?
It's not my task.
It was, it was Ms. Gilio, right?
I, I actually attended the last JSSBC.
Okay.
I have to get my notes, so.
Okay.
I can't remember.
You can go ahead, Ms. Lamphier is looking for her notes, so don't rush.
I just wanted to ask Dr. Andre if he remembers whether the last Ed Council meeting was after the last full-Board meeting.
Well, Ms. Gilio went to the last Ed Council meeting.
No. Mr. Claffey was at the last Ed Council meeting.
No, Ms. Gilio said yes, and Tara, she and Tara went back and forth on what the date was.
It was in January. Sorry, it was in January, though, right?
It was Mr. Claffey, so.
I will let you be right on this one time. Okay, Mr. Claffey, share with us.
No, actually, I remember saying, I don't remember anything meaning, do you remember?
No, it was healthy conversations back and forth. It's, you know, but it was, again, around school culture, a couple minor things like that, that they were addressed here at the building level. But again, I enjoy conversations with our, our teachers on how do we improve the schools. So there was a lot of things around school culture, discipline, and how do we partner together moving forward.
Cool. Sounds like it was a nice, productive meeting. Okay. Ms. Lamphier, I will give the floor to you for your liaison report for JSSBC.
Okay, the last JSSBC meeting was January 26th, and of course, we got the usual presentation from Harriman and from Harvey. The McCarthy High, McCarthy Middle School, they're doing a furniture kickoff meeting in just a few weeks to figure out what kind of furniture they're going to put in. And in Penachuk, they were getting a certificate of occupancy for the library and beginning to move the books in. The old learning commons was still a few weeks away from the finish. And the, the portables are going to be moved from Elm Street to the elementary schools that are having work done on them. And at 55 Franklin, we were, we approved a kitchen design for the, you know, for the upstairs, so that we won't have to send in lunches, and that will be paid for by food service rather than JSSBC funds. And I think that's all I have for now. Thanks.
And just to clarify, I wasn't necessarily wrong. Ms. Gilio texted and said she's going to the March one, so.
It's okay to be. I just had a quick, can I just ask a quick, this is just a quick question about, so the, I believe the Penachuk, there was a date set for the grand opening gala?
It hasn't been settled, there was a couple conflicts, and the plaque won't be ready by the date that we first threw out there.
Okay.
Ms. Brown? So, actually, aside a question, and just to follow up, how do they decide, what kind of furniture do they buy? Do they actually bring in samples and have, you know, people of different sizes and shapes in them? Or is it all ordered online? Because I think, and the testing the durability, because I can remember some reviews from when they were designing this building, the initial furniture was not maybe ideal, it looked cool, but it wasn't maybe the most comfortable.
Well, to be honest, the meeting was so long ago, I can't remember, I didn't put it in my notes, so I can't really give you any more information.
So we just met last week, so last week, the week before, with the, with Harvey and Harriman, to go through that process of, again, what do we vision, what does it look like, just that aspect, but it is about durability. We haven't seen any specifically yet, but more, and what's our interest in how we want the furniture to kind of look like. We are looking for flexible, vibrant, it's a brand-new, a lot of natural light in the school, so we want to make sure that the furniture reflects a vibrant learning environment. But we'll, we'll have a Committee to start picking some as we move forward. So we just had our initial meeting, I think it was last Tuesday, yep, so.
Excellent. Well, I mean, I do think that we should make, definitely, I want to see it looking spectacular, which I have no doubt it will, but also, I'm thinking, you know, I've seen the, you know, the basketball team and the volleyball team, and there's some pretty long-legged people on there.
Jess wants to see the Amazon reviews before we commit. Four stars, but only four reviews, we don't like those odds. Ms. Raymond?
Thanks, yeah. So this, we have these conversations at the JSSBC as well, and I know when we bought for Fairgrounds, there was a lot of discussion about durability. And it's nice, because Harriman has just completed some other middle and high schools nearby, so they're able to say, listen, two years ago, we built, you know, so-and-so, and they bought these furniture, and they lasted, or they didn't last, or, you know, because nobody wants to be buying chairs every couple of years the way that we had to do here. So.
Moving on from liaison reports, let's go, and there's no unfinished business, I will turn the floor over to Dr. Andre for the new business.
Yep, so the first recommendation is to approve the NASIS MOU around tuition reimbursement. As you can see in the memo, there's new language that's just upping the tuition reimbursement. So we know that we want to be able to recruit and retain our best administrators. So this MOU is just increasing the amount of the tuition reimbursement from $1,000 annually to $4,000 annually, with a cap of $12,000 for the association. So over the last few years, and talking to Mr. Donovan, there hasn't been a lot of administrators tapping into this line, but we want to encourage our administrators for their continuous improvement in any kind of courses that they want to take. So we want to be able to support that and also put a cap on that. So that's the big change here. That $4,000 amount actually is reflective in all the contracts, so that's where we came up with that number. So just looking for a recommendation to approve that MOU.
Okay. So I'll, I'll move to approve the, that MOU.
I'll second.
Thank you. I just have one follow-up question, I'm sure other people have questions, too. I know my work does this, but it teams with specific colleges in order to, do you guys do that? Like, do you, like, we can go through Revere, we can go, there's some online course, like Exella, I don't know. I'm obviously super invested in utilizing all of my benefits, I just know how much sick time I have.
We don't have formal agreements with our higher ed partnerships for, like, a tuition reimbursement, but that's a great idea.
Isn't it a good idea?
It is.
Mm-hmm. We do SNU, I think, Revere, UNH, UMass Lowell, just saying. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, I was trying to just look it up, and so I'm glad to see that there's a minimum grade of B, because I think we should be encouraging excellence if we're going to be paying for something. But I was curious about what the cap is for the teacher's contract. I don't think it's like $12,000 a year, I think it's less than that.
The total amount is $225,000, I believe, and max per is.
Contract year, and there's no max per teacher per se.
Okay, so, Mr. Mark, who is speaking without a microphone, he said there's no max per person, or per, but there's a max per, the total pot, right?
The max in the contract, per contract year is $225,000. The max per educator is $4,000, with a two-year commitment every time you use that money. So if I used it this year, I'd have to commit to two more years, and if I used it in three years, I'd have another two-year commitment. There is no cap of how much an educator can use over the course of their tenure in the district for the teacher's contract.
Okay. And then, thank you, that leads to my second question, which is, are we requiring, and I don't see it here, but it might not have it, are we requiring a commitment of another, like, if, if our administrators go and get a second master's or a doctorate, are we requiring them to stay here for a certain amount of time afterwards?
That didn't change, so there's no new language that requires, makes that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, Ken, when you say Bs, I just remember, Bs get degrees, don't beat yourself up. Anyway, all of those, all of those in favor of approving MOU, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, I didn't vote. I'm going to say nay. I don't like the idea of not requiring a commitment after we've paid money towards something, so.
For not teachers.
Yeah. I think if we pay for part of your education, you should stay here for a couple of years. Not the rest of your life, but a couple of years would be nice.
Glad you came over to my side.
I know.
Who would think?
That is a weird.
Blue moon or something, I don't know.
And just to make the record reflect, Ms. Darling stepped out at, at, sorry, 8:27. Okay, so she was not a part of the vote. So two nays, and one, two, three, four, five yeses. So motion passes. Dr. Andre, back to you. You sound a lot smarter than I do right now.
Yep, so this next recommendation is to approve a contract with John Freeman and Toby Chassie for special education consultant services. This contract came in after, like, the day after the FNO meeting, and that's why it came to the full Board instead of to the FNO Committee, so we apologize for that. But the purpose of this contract is really to help our special education department in work on a program evaluation. We have a special education Subcommittee looking at how do we improve our special education services, especially around the role of, or the job descriptions. It's pretty evident from our initial couple of meetings with our job description for special educators. It differs by building, and so there's one job description for special educators K through 12, and through our discussions, what's happening in one building has not happened in another building, and that could be good or bad. But we would like to engage with these consultants to go over our program evaluation. They'll use multiple protocols to get almost a 360-degree look at, and run focus groups with our teachers, our administrators, possibly parents, on how do we really write a job description and improve our delivery of services. They would also help us, again, with the role descriptions, but also program evaluation. We have a number of district-wide programs throughout the district, so this is actually a good time to review, are they, are they working, not working? How do we make recommendations on moving forward? So just where we're hearing over the last couple of years, like, what's special about special education, I think this is a good time to really look at the students in our programs, the type of services that we're delivering, and do we have the right infrastructure to deliver? So they'll be doing some of that work, and again, you can see the, in the memo in here on the number of meetings that they'll be holding. And then they would just kind of, if, if necessary, help us with the recruiting of a new director of special education, and this will all happen over the next six months. So just looking for a recommendation to approve the contract with them for, it's a total program evaluation would be $20,000. If they help us with a director position search, it would be up to $12,000. Role description is $4,500, and any kind of communications is $1,500, so.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. I'll second it. Comments, questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So if we're going to hire these people, are we going to put a not to exceed? Because I calculated everything up to about $38,000, just figuring, you know, $150 an hour for consultants up to activities, or do we do eliminate that and just have it up to a certain point, and then you come back to the board again if you need additional funds? I'm just kind of throwing out that question.
I'm comfortable with it.
To do?
Not to exceed $38,000.
Not to exceed $38,000?
I'll accept the friendly amendment, not to exceed.
What if we don't need them to help us find a special ed director? Well, obviously, it wouldn't be to exceed, but, I don't know, I'm kind of at the, like, let's start off at 20, and if we need more help, we come back, but.
So you could do...
So it would be $26,000. So if they help us with the role descriptions and the communication.
That comes to $24,500. Am I correct here?
Plus communications would be another $1,500, which would be the $26,000.
So, you know, typically, this would be coming through finance and ops. So I, you know, and we've seen several different things like this. I actually think it would be okay, I trust Dr. Andreid's judgment. And as a former special educator, he probably knows the industry pretty well. And also working, because one of the things I really liked about this in the contract, it talks about program evaluation, engaging school staff in multiple meetings, engaging parents and community, and analyzing the data that we actually have in the district to make an action plan and have a recommendation for the director position. By the end of April is actually in this thing, which I'm kind of wondering, if just based on the timeline, if we end up having to engage those services for a consulting fee. We've got February break, and then we've got April break shortly thereafter. Post, we've got budget committee. Would it be difficult to throw one more thing in to approve for, like, an extra few thousand dollars? I kind of feel like the administration could make that decision. If we don't need it, I don't think you're going to spend money just because we said you could.
Ms. Johnson?
That's why I said not to exceed $38,000. It kind of, it doesn't shock me that there's no consistency through the district, that some schools have special ed different than other schools, because it's been, you could see that for a long time. I hope you're going to take a look at how IEPs are written and services and staff meetings are attended with this whole thing, because I hear from advocates at times that are really shocked on some of the things with the meetings and the IEP services.
Yeah, and if I could just, along those lines, just because it's different doesn't mean it's bad. So I just want to make sure, again, we all have positive intentions. So, you know, again, our special educators, our regular educators, our principals are doing the best that they have with their, but just because we're doing a program evaluation or there's different services and different programs doesn't necessarily means it's bad, but it's just a good time for a review. So, and tightening things up. So I just don't want, just because it's not consistent doesn't mean that it's necessarily a negative.
Ms. Darling?
Ms. Johnson taught me to ask this question, and I'm going to do it now, since she hasn't yet. Money man, Mr. Dan Donovan, can we afford this?
Well, there was a little curveball. There was a curveball thrown tonight that it's going to be over potentially two fiscal years, so I'll have to take a look at that. But we can use some of the funds that we're saving by not having a full-time director right now to pay for the program eval part, so.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a good question.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Johnson?
So I'm glad you took my tip. I let you do it tonight. So, Mr. Donovan, if we don't, should we just do just the eval for $20,000 right now?
No, you can do the approval.
Okay.
If it continues into next fiscal year, I mean, you have to escrow some funds, or, there's different ways I can deal with it.
So if we did a not to exceed $38,000, would you be okay with that?
That'd be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? And I will still second your motion with the friendly amendment not to exceed 38. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
So the last recommendation for tonight is to approve the Unit C Secretaries' Collective Bargaining Agreement 22 through 26. Do you like me to highlight any things in the memo?
Yes.
So, in addition to the redline copy that you received, some of the highlights in there is the removal of two union positions to be moved to the non-affiliated group, wage increases and paid lunches. So in the '22, '23 school year, there's a 0% increase on the salary schedule, steps for those who qualify. There's a new step five, which is a 4% increase over the step four for those with 21-plus years of service. There's also a half-paid lunch. Right now, there's, this unit isn't paid for lunch, so we're moving in that direction of paying for lunch. And it's a retro to July 1st of 2022. In '23, '24, there's a 2.5% increase on the salary schedule and steps for those who qualify. In 2024, '25, there's a 0% increase on the salary schedule, steps for all those who qualify, and then we'll move to a full-paid lunch. In '25, '26, there's a 3% on the salary schedule, steps for those who qualify. And then our health benefits align with the city. And then there will be additional bereavement leave. The new language aligns with the teacher contract. So those are just really high-level. You received a redline in your packet, if there's any questions on that. And I believe I hit everything. Hopefully, I didn't misspeak.
No, but if I could just speak, I did hand you tonight the costing sheet. Now, it's not complete, because the piece related to the insurance benefits, the city has to review that. So they're going to, they're going to review it. They'll put in the numbers, because this unit will be taking the city's medical proposals, so now all the units at the school district will have it. They will take it effective the beginning of this next coming school year. But what I handed out to you down through the retirement costs, those numbers are accurate. So anything from insurance benefit cost below, which is line 32, those numbers are going to be adjusted by the insurance benefit cost will then affect everything down below there. So I wanted to get you something. These numbers tie in with what Superintendent Andre said. And you can see, like, in the base pay calc, I broke out how much was a salary increase, how much is a step increase, and how much the lunch breakout was. So that's, that's in there. If you have any questions on any of that, feel free to contact me, or you can ask now.
I don't see anybody making significant eye contact.
And we will get, when this is complete, we will get it to you, because to get it to the Board of Alderman, this has to be complete. So the city has it now. It's just going to take a few days for them to get it back to us.
Ms. Johnson?
You know, I hate when these come before the full board, and we don't have a chance to digest all this. This is a lot to digest, because you see that zero salary schedule, and then you see the steps, and then you go through all this with the percentages. And, you know, this is really a lot to absorb at the full board. I wish, you know, I know that it's hard to get it to us prior to, but I can't vote on this tonight, because I know people looking at me. I can't vote on this, because the numbers, you know. I need to digest this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Raymond?
I'm just, when's our next meeting?
March 13.
March 13?
Yeah, it's a bit farther off. Yep, the 13th, so after vacation. Make the motion yet? No, I was going to make the motion. So I'm going to move to approve the Unit C Secretaries' Collective Bargaining Agreement 2022 to 2026.
Second.
Mr. Claffey seconds it. Now we can, I guess, continue on with our conversation. Did anybody have anything they want to add or question, or? Get Mr. Donovan's specific percentage advice? Ms. Oden?
I just want to say, I've worked on contracts with Mr. Donovan, and I would say, he puts a lot of thought into how much money we can afford. And I don't think, if we could afford this, he wouldn't have said what he said. So I'm going to support this.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Andreid?
I just have a comment. I just want to really thank Mr. Marku and the negotiating team, our negotiating team. I think it was a lot of good dialogue back and forth, but I just really want to thank their team for a healthy conversation. Again, I think this is a contract that we can afford, that, again, moves the district forward in retaining and recruiting potential unit members in that regard. So, again, just really thanking both negotiating teams to be really thoughtful in the process. I think this is a good deal for both sides.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Johnson?
I know I'm probably going to be the only one who doesn't vote for this. But my question always is, can the taxpayers of this city afford these contracts? Because our taxes this year went up, not just with a reevaluation, we got a 4% hit. Because people don't have to understand is that the mayor has to raise X amount of money to pay for all these services, and most of our services of employees. And so when I take a look at this, and I look at this contract, I have to say to myself, what is the percentage of raises of our citizens of this city getting? Most of the people aren't getting any raises, and it's hurting them more because of the fact, the cost of fuel, food, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not saying that people don't deserve a raise. I'm the only one on the board that didn't take union money anyway. I'm not beholden to anybody. But the question is, I'm looking at this down the road. How are we going to afford this? This isn't a, this year contract, this is next year. This is a four-year contract that we have to be able to afford to pay. And this isn't the only union. And we've done this with all the other union contracts, four years down the road. We don't know where we're going to be four years in the city. Is the economy going to get better? Is the economy going to get worse? I can't, I can't consciously do this. I think we've got great employees, but you know what? My husband didn't get a raise like this. He got zero. So how do I and other people afford this? And people who are on a fixed income? How do, how do you afford this? And you have to think about that also. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, for record, Ms. Darling has stepped out. I just, I mean, I obviously support this, but I want to bring us back to the conversation about chairs and furniture that we just had. I think sometimes when we look at employees, we look at them as liabilities, and we look at the chairs as assets. And I think we have to fundamentally change our views and look at our employees as the assets. And I think when we pay accordingly and when we support the people who are making the business of education work, we should be looking at getting the same kind of quality in our employees that we do as the furniture that we're buying for the schools. So while it obviously creates a tax burden for people, it's, having quality schools is what draws more taxpayers to the city. So when we can provide that quality, I don't know. I think we're doing, I think we're increasing the quality of our city and the reason people stay and the reason people come, and really highlights the quality work that we've been getting. I mean, the secretaries are the backbone of everything that happens in the school district. So that's just, that's my two cents on it, but anybody else? No? Okay. Okay, I guess Ms. Darling isn't going to be here for the vote. So all those in favor of approving the Unit C Secretaries' Collective Bargaining Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Darling was absent. Okay. Motion passes. Okay, time for second public comments. Does anybody, sorry, don't rush up, Adam. Hold on, hold on. Does anybody need to take just a five-minute break? This is a longer-than-normal meeting. Does anybody want to take a quick break before we go into second public comment? No? Okay.
I don't know if he's the one person on here.
Oh, well, I didn't know that.
I don't usually do it twice, I know, it's too long.
Right?
I'm Adam Marku. I've been here before, Forge Delory Lane. Still president of the NTU.
Is your micro, sorry, is your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Thanks.
I want to comment on furniture first. I think you have a great opportunity to ask the Penachuk staff what they think of their new furniture. It was brand, all brand-new. As someone who survived the opening of North and South with that furniture, it needs four legs. The desks need four legs, the chairs need four legs. The new stuff that we bought at North and South did not have four legs. And to Ms. Brown's point, I will be willing and able to test out any furniture for the durability of it. If I can survive sitting in the chair, anyone can. And you can take that for whatever you want it to be. Thank you for passing the secretary's contract tonight. I agree with what Dr. Andreid said. There was a lot of discussion, passionate at times, but a lot of movement on both sides to come to the middle and find an agreement. To a group that provides so much to our school district, they're basically the first people you see every time you walk into that building that you're going into. So thank you for that. I'm back about BEDB. I've had more thoughts, concerns. We had all seven contracts opened at one time last year. We've tried to stagger them. That was my goal with the NTU contracts, to stagger them. I had all four open last year, and then the other three that I don't represent were open. In scheduling can be challenging. I have concerns that we're going to post meetings now. Under what RSA is the board prepared to go into non-public to negotiate a contract? Because RSA 91A322A says compensation of a public employee. It does not say negotiations of the union. Now, I'm being difficult with asking that question, not because I don't think it qualifies, but I have read Nashua Civic Soundings Board in the Nashua scoop and see what people put in right-to-nose for and what kind of problem we could be facing if we're posting meetings, going into executive session. This is a legitimate question. Are we allowed to have executive session to negotiate the contract at the table with the board and the union? Because we don't do that now, because the meetings we have are not meetings in the eyes of the school board definition. I frankly don't care how we do it, as long as we're all at the table and we can do it. I agree, things happen with life, and maybe this will make sure people are there. But this policy says that if there aren't two school board members at the meeting, there can't be a meeting. Am I correct? Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
I know, this isn't a question and answer, sorry. I think I'm correct. So then that meeting doesn't happen. And I know we can sub people in and out, but I think there's a benefit to having a consistent negotiating team on both sides of the aisle. Some of our problems, from my opinion, with the last four of my contracts, is that we've changed out administration, and it's not the current administration's fault that they weren't there when it started. But I've had three superintendents and three HR directors with all four contracts, and that impacts things. Actually, the only constant person on all those was Dan. So those are, I have concerns about the policy. I, you know, Ms. Raymond said, we will, we can always bring the policy back, so I have concerns about that, and, you know, maybe we can address it as they happen. The policy does not require you to go into non-public, does it? This goes back to my RSA question, and I haven't had time to, my attorney's probably watching, yelling, "Adam, shut up." So those are just my concerns about how this is going to change how we do things. I'm not saying that it's a bad change, I'm just not sure how it's going to happen. So there's that. In my final piece, so I guess you got the red line copy Friday, or documents, maybe the costing today, I don't know. This process that we just did tonight, my members voted at 4:30, and now the board has it, has been the process that we've used for every, all 17 contracts I've negotiated for the Nashua Teachers Union. And if we're going to change the process because the board needs more time, can we just talk about what the process might look like if we're going to change it, so I can prepare the membership that it's going to be a little longer? And if you need more time, you need more time. You know, my members had a week with it, and they got it last Monday. They don't get a costing sheet like that, but they get information. But if we're going to change that process, you just, like, loop me in, so we know what we're doing. And if it's not working, then let's look at it. All right, I'm done. Good night, thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to board member comments. I'll not pick on Ms. Darling this time. I'll start over here with Ms. Oden for board member comments. Sorry, you didn't know what I was doing.
No, I have no comment tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I'm just in shock that Ms. Raymond and I agreed on the same thing tonight. I mean, it's just, it's like, really, it's same thing like when Mr. Claffey and I agree, you know?
Very cold in here.
I know, and then we had, you know, memory loss tonight. You know, all in one night, who could take this, you know? I'd like to thank Mr. Marku for his opinions tonight, and I know, this is a great evening here, I know. I know, who would think? But I take, I listen very carefully to you, and thank you very much, Mr. Marku, for your comments. That's it for me tonight. Too much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Brown?
I want to thank the teachers that came in to give that wonderful presentation on the science of reading. If I could make a request, if we could have that PowerPoint added to our slides in the, because I think there was some really valuable stuff that people would want to know about. And I really appreciate the direction that you're going from a overall systemic standpoint in the district, so thank you. And also a reminder that there's some job fairs coming up, both here and also the Nashua staff will be out at other job fairs, so please come to them.
Ms. Lamphier?
I'm just really excited. There's a lot of positive things happening in the district, and I just wanted to highlight two of them, that, you know, the presentation tonight on the reading is really great, and it's a big change, and it's going to help a lot of kids. And then I'm also really happy about the agreement to have people come in to look at our special education system, and Dr. Andre said the magic words, to build the infrastructure to give the special ed kids what they need. So I can't wait to see what they advise us. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to look up the answer to Mr. Marku's question about the Right to Know Law, and I don't have an answer quickly. But for my comments tonight, I just want to mention that February is Black History Month. This is our only meeting in February, so you get to hear about it tonight. This month, we learned that the Holman Stadium here in Nashua was added to the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire, which is really exciting. As many of you know, we had the first black players in the minor league baseball for the entire country, which is pretty cool. So this week, there is a showcase at Riviera tomorrow night at their library regarding Black History. On Saturday, the Nashville Public Library will be having an event, including a Taste of Africa thing that they're doing that you have to register for. And on Sunday, the 26th, the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire is having a panel discussion at the Portsmouth New Hampshire Library. And you do not need to register for that one, you can just show up.
Thank you.
Ms. Darling?
Fun fact, one of my son's favorite heroes, Lonnie Johnson, is an African-American who in 1989 invented the super soaker, and then later on, the Nerf gun. Thank you very much for your contribution. We needed it, making households everywhere so much more fun. And I really want to take a minute to thank the four people that are sitting in front of me. I don't think anyone realizes how much work you guys do, day in, day out, from the time you wake up till the time you go to bed, and I see it, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no comments.
I can hear you mumbling over there, Mr. Claffey.
Move to adjourn? Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Okay, we are out. It's nine o'clock.